The Oregon School Boards Association OSBA Board of Directors Special Meeting on Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 is called to order at 3:05 PM. I want to welcome all those who are joining us, members of the public, staff, and board members for being here. The purpose of this meeting is the consideration of a tentative agreement for the employment of the executive director. One of the most important decisions a board, a governing board does is hiring their executive. So I want to really highlight the importance of this meeting and also what led us to here is really diligent work. This board has engaged in throughout the process of considering how to go and approach this process and following this process, defining parameters and criteria that's guided us and eventually negotiating a contract on your behalf from myself and Chris Cronin with Emily Nishik. And we are happy to report to you that we do have tentative agreements for your consideration. That's what was shared with you at the packet. So first item on the agenda is to consider the agenda. The president entertains a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Chrissy Kotke and second by Sonia McKenzie to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any objection to the motion that has been said? If you have an objection, please unmute and say I object. Is there any objection? Is there any objection? Is there an objection? Passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the executive director contract. I want to share with you the process that we will go over today and I'll try to share my screen as soon as I explain the process and if anything happens with the screen, I'll ask Linnell to pick it up from where I stopped. But where we are right now is we will share with you what have arrived at this contract and how we arrived at it and some elements to highlight about this contract or tentative agreements for our contracts. We will entertain questions from board members and/or comments. And we will go through round robin suggestions from board members have been clear that we would like to provide the opportunity for every more board member at the table. So we will do that in a round robin style for one round and we will assess from there. I want to note that on staff, we do have Bob Sterringer and Julian Mars. They are both from the Haringlong PC Council, which is our Oregon School Board Association External Council. Julian Mars, you may have not worked with him before. He's an employment attorney within the same council and he did provide phenomenal support for myself and Chris to work on your behalf, negotiating a tentative agreement that's both aligns with the laws and policies of OSBA and employment law, but also provide perspectives that were very valuable for us. So with that, I will start sharing some notes about the contract. And then we will answer, we will go over comments and questions. And then we will consolidate all the questions together, answer them. If there is any unanswered questions, we'll look again and hopefully we'll entertain a motion at the end. Chris, for what reason would you like to be recognized?
Um, I just wanted a clarification on the timing of this meeting since we're having another full set of meetings this weekend. Was there a calendar or timeframe that we had to take care of this one today instead of on Friday or Saturday?
Absolutely. Very good question. So thank you for all those who participated in the doodle where we wanted to find a time in addition to the retreat. The retreat contains really important business and in consultation with board members who provide their perspectives about the resolutions that we are considering, we made sure that we're very mindful for the time of the retreat to provide ample of time for the agenda and the work. So the purpose of this meeting is specific for the consideration of the tentative agreement. And the retreat had already pre-scheduled agenda. So that's the answer for it, but thank you for the question. So I want you just to have a look at the names here when we go into the questions, see who's before you or and be ready to unmute to either say pass or provide a comment. So for example, I see my name here, Sami, Don is before me, so I'll start unmuting as soon as Don is called on. So I can ask my question or participate with a comment or say pass. So in terms of considering a tentative agreement for the executive director employment in front of you at the packet, you have seen tentative agreements that provides the parameters and interests that you have asked for, stability, leadership, strategic need, readiness, financial impact, transparency, timeliness and work-life balance and health of employee. So those are the parameters and perspectives and aspects that we have worked together collaboratively with the executive director, candidate Emily Nishik, our interim executive director, on reaching an agreement that best achieves all of these priorities and interests. And as you can see, the interests and priorities that you have stated are all included here. So we'll go over them one by one very briefly. And then we'll answer any questions or points that you would like to discuss. Stability, the contract that is in front of you works towards stability for the organization and the board by creating the foundation for the executive director to lead in partnership. Both parties recognize the value in creating a balanced and mutual beneficial contract. We strove to bring clarity to expectations, which ultimately created a more stable environment to lead the organization, the executive director and the board. Leadership. This contract recognizes the work of the executive director and the importance of the organization's role in accomplishing its mission. It's more accurately reflects the realities of the position. And more importantly, reflects both the executive director work leading OSBA and serving as the administrator of PACE. Strategic needs. OSBA is unique entity to meet the organization's strategic need and serve the mission of OSBA and PACE. We needed a contract that reflects this reality and a compensation package that allows for recruiting and retaining high caliber talent at all levels of the organization. We worked to include more transparent language in the contract to help the organization more clearly define the roles, responsibilities and expectations of the executive director and provide better opportunities for checks and balances. Readiness. This contract reflects that the new executive director has been doing the job for the past 10 months during one of the most challenging times in this organization's history. Few organizations have a better opportunity to see leadership in action. OSBA is well positioned to continue to serve as the leading advocacy and service organization for students and school boards in Oregon. It also considers the executive director's demonstrated leadership at OSBA and her experience, which exceeds the position's qualifications. These include managing teams for over 15 years, managing multimillion dollars budgets, generating revenue, managing boards and legislative policy and government relations work. In addition to this, she has an advanced degree in related field with a master's of public administration and a certificate in nonprofit management. So we talked about stability, leadership, strategic needs, readiness, and we'll talk about the remainder four. Financial impact. This contract reflects a deep understanding and commitment to the overall health and well-being of OSBA now and into the future. It protects both the employee and the employer by allowing solid leadership from the executive director to make decisions in the organization's best interests. In addition, it's more accurately reflects fair compensation for high level of work and responsibilities required of the executive director to be the lead administrator, administrator of both PACE and OSBA. This contract is fair, equitable and sustainable for OSBA. Transparency. We worked to clean up language that would provide more transparency, especially around the expense process for the executive director and providing in the contract additional checks and balances with the treasurer secretary reviewing the expense. In addition to this, we brought clarity and transparency to how the additional compensation should be paid out and change the retention bonus to more accurately reflect a true retention incentive. Timeliness. We worked on a short timeline to complete this contract in a time for the retreat and ensure we have a permanent leader in place for the legislative roadshow, convention, and upcoming legislative session. Both parties continued working through the weekend to accomplish this task, ensuring we did our due diligence. OSBA retained external legal counsel provided valuable input during this process. And finally, and last but definitely not least, work-life balance and health of employee. This work was, this was a critical interest raised by both the employee and board members. The contract reflects the board's recognition that this is a stressful, high-value position that requires a lot of time away from family, nights, weekends, and extensive travel both across the state and nationally. The vacation leave allows the executive director to feel supported in stepping away to recharge, sets a good example for the team and meets the obligations of her personal and family life. So these are the dimensions or interests that the contract balanced all and we believe achieves them. And we have arrived at a tentative agreement with Emily Nishik on. Now I want to invite the board members to ask a question or provide a comment. I would kindly say if you can commit to 45 seconds to 60 seconds to allow all of our board members to at least have one opportunity, that will be very valuable for everybody to have an opportunity to ask a question or make a comment. So with that, I see some hands raised unless it is not, unless it is something about process and it's not a comment or a question, I will call on you. Or please let's wait until we reach everybody through the list. So I see some hands up, no hands up, perfect. So let's start with Craig Albright. Do you have any comments? Feel free to say pass if you don't.
Pass.
Thank you, Craig. Jeff Propper. Jeff Propper. I think he's not with us today. Chris Cronin.
Pass.
Jackie Crook. Jackie Crook. I don't see her on the list. Lori Denzucka.
I just had a comment to, um, thank you for your work that you put into this, but also concern about sustainability as we move forward as a board. So that was my comment.
Thank you, Lori. Katrina Doughty.
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank you for the like thorough and thoughtful process. There's a lot of intentionality between every, every step and I'm grateful for that and very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Neelam Gupta. Neelam. Linda Hamilton. Linda Hamilton. I think you're muted, Linda.
I was just listening to you go with the timeline and all that stuff and what and how it came about and what's best for the members and what's best for this and what the board decided. I don't think every board member had input on this. And I disagree with how this whole thing has unfolded. I feel like I go to get the agenda today and the whole agreement contract isn't even in there. You have to go to board book and not everybody had access to board book. Did I miss it? Please tell me I missed it. I found it in board book, but was it attached to the agenda today?
It was a part of the packet and also the attachment to that Linnell have sent to the board members on Monday. That's correct. We, I'm sorry, it's not correct that we did not have access to it. We did receive it as an attachment and also it's part of the packet available in board book, as you mentioned.
Okay, I didn't see it on the agenda, but I found it in the board book where there's lots of changes. So I just want to make sure the board book is accurate, right?
Yes, the board book is accurate. The contract language that you see is a tentative agreement language that is as accurate and you have it. And thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments?
I don't know. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Howitt.
Yeah, good afternoon. I will say that I am a little bit concerned that we're having this meeting now instead of this weekend because we only have half of our members that are in attendance with that. So that does concern me a little bit. I'm also, I recognize all the work that's gone into this. I don't know if there is a timeline for when the assistant executive director position will be reviewed and looked at because as we've said, Emily's been doing this position for quite some time. And we need to have a firm idea then of what's the assistant, the second in command going to be. So I'm hoping to hear some more about that when we get to the meeting this weekend or at some other time.
Thank you, Chris. Tristan Irvin. Tristan? Don't see Tristan here. Greg Kents? Greg?
Yes, um, could someone explain to me what a retention incentive is? I have not have any, any any, anyone that I know doesn't have one of those and I don't understand why we have it in there.
Greg, so I would like to ask Julian to maybe provide more context to the answer that I will provide. Retention incentives usually are made for executives and in some circumstances CEOs, superintendents. And this position had an incentive for Mr. Green and potentially for folks before that as well. The retention incentive is a tool, a financial tool that the boards use to ensure that the our organization retains its person who's leading the organization over the years. So that's, that's basically my understanding of it. And Julian, if you want to add any additional information?
You don't necessarily need to add any additional information. I think you hit it, hit the nail right on the head, Jamie.
My, I guess, I guess further I would ask, you know, what, what's the purpose of having a a high-paid salary if that doesn't retention? I mean, I don't understand why we have to add more to it to keep somebody, either they want to work for us or they don't.
Thank you for the comments, Greg. Christie Kotke.
I have no, I can pass. Thank you.
Thanks. Steve Law.
Pass.
Thanks, Sonia McKenzie.
Hi, yeah, can you guys hear me? I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the work that's gone into this. You know, it takes a great deal of time to put this all together. It's very thoughtful. I think it's important to consider all aspects that you shared. I did have a question about, um, you mentioned work-life balance and I know that that is not language we have traditionally had in our, had in the past. So I wanted to ask a little bit about how that came about. I think it's incredibly, critically important to have that, that language and that thought process as you negotiate a contract and really it's really thoughtful. I'd just love to hear a little bit more about that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sonia, for the question. And I apologize, I was going back and forth between consolidating all questions toward the end or an answer at the end at the same time or answering one at the time. So how about Sonia, we'll continue with everybody and we'll speak to that. Sounds good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Alonzo Oliveros.
Uh, pass.
Thank you, Chrissy Reed.
Hi, thank you. I do, I do want to thank all parties involved at their work on here. I'm going to echo both what Lori said about sustainability. I do worry about that. This is a very high salary and we don't have an executive assistant director yet. And then I also want to touch on what Greg said. You know, I appreciate what you said about the importance of, you know, making sure that this position is well compensated, but I too think that at a, at a starting base of, I think, 240, that incentive seems like it's kind of over the top. I think a 240 base salary is actually very generous. And so I'm not sure about why that, that sort of incentive pay was added at this time at the beginning of a new contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Clyde Rude.
I'm going to express concern about the timing. We don't have all of our members here, so I'm going to echo that one. Should have been done at the retreat coming up this weekend. The pay, I'm also going to echo that one. I expressed it last week when we talked personally. It's too high. Need to lower it, bring her in at her experience level and pay appropriately for the experience level.
Nicole Schott. Emily Smith.
Thank you. I'm assuming it's because of time constraints that we're talking about this now and not this weekend, but it does sound like people are concerned that maybe we need to have an additional conversation at the meeting this weekend. I don't know.
Yeah, understood. And I'll have to say if the board decides to vote on the contract today, we will have the time to do the business that we need to do for the members during the retreat. If we don't, we could triage and find out what the board wishes. So definitely we'll heed that advice. My recommendation is to make a decision balancing all of these things. So my recommendation is to vote on this today. And if there's any feedback on that decision as well, that would help us. Nancy Thomas. Plaine Watzker. Don Watson.
Um, thank you. I was just going to say, thank you for the, I appreciate that we were able to contact you. The email that said, contact you and give us your, give us what we wanted. That made me feel a little bit more comfortable because when we ended the meeting, I was like, whoa. So I appreciate that email and I just want to hear what everybody else has to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anna Ali. Austin Fulnagi. Krista Parent. Jane Reed. And I don't believe we have an ex officia from the Board of Education. So I will answer some of the questions and I'll defer to Chris Cronin or Julian if there's any additional information they want to share. I want to share highlights about why this contract is the best agreement that balances all of the parameters that you have shared. Just like how you negotiate or your board chairs negotiate a contract with your superintendent or how your superintendent and staff negotiate contracts with their employees. This is really a balancing between all the different priorities and this is the best contract that achieves those priorities. The financial package with all its elements balanced what was best in our understanding from what we heard from you, individual board members, the board at large and according to the parameters that you have set for us and at the same time for the other party, Emily Nishik. So to balance all of these things, we got you the most optimal agreement that we believe will serve those goals. I want to highlight in terms of the retention incentive, traditionally it was there for the executive director who was permanently employed. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, it was double the amount that you see in front of you here. So we pushed for two things. Number one, it's half of the retention bonus. Number two, it's not paid at advance, in advance. It used to be paid up in advance. Now it's paid at the end of the year. The intentionality from including a retention bonus in addition to a base pay includes several reasons. One of them to guarantee that you have an incentive for the administrator to serve throughout the fiscal year. A disruption in the middle of the fiscal year is very big for the organization and the language right now really helped us achieve those priorities. To the question around the work-life balance, it was really an important factor that we heard from board members. We heard from Emily as well in terms of making sure we don't sacrifice any elements that really supports the employee to have that work-life balance elements to their life, including the vacation time and the cure of the vacation. So that was really the beginning of the conversation when we heard it from you. And then throughout the proposals and counter proposals, we did enter space positional bargaining where we go back and forth with proposals. We always ask questions and highlights why we're prioritizing an element over the other based on those interests and work-life balance was always present in those conversations, also sustainability and the financial fiscal responsibility for this. So I hope I did touch on all of what you mentioned or most of what you mentioned. One thing I want to say is this salary is slightly above than the average of what we saw from the comparators. But we have seen really important aspects for this salary to be fair in terms of preventing salary compression, not only for this position, but also for other positions in the situation. This salary is going to keep up and it will not surprise future boards in a year or two or three being way behind. So we did really push for the best outcome. And I can tell you the numbers that you see in front of you and my assessment are the best outcome that we believe is for the organization. Is there anything Chris Cronin or Julian would you like to add from the perspective of the tentative agreement to the questions that were shared?
Yeah, I, I would like to speak, you did a great job, but I just would like to speak to the work-life balance, especially since Sonia asked specifically about that. That is, I haven't actually negotiated a contract where we discussed that in the work-life balance in depth, but we have an executive director who has children in public school, elementary school. And I, I think that the acknowledgement that there's a, there's a commute, there's a, as, as we said in the slide, extensive travel out of state, in-state, lots of meetings, lots of weekends and evenings. I, I agreed and I think we all felt and we heard from other board members that making sure that we are acknowledging that no matter what level a person is, is employed or what their life is, they need to have that balance and permission to continue to have a personal life. So that, I, I really appreciate that we were able to discuss that as part of this negotiation.
And I see that there's a hand raised, so I won't take any time to add to that. That's very well said.
Sounds good. So we can go over another round robin or for the sake of expediency, I'll recognize hands. That's our up. I saw Katrina and Linda having their hands up. Katrina, do you still want to share an input or shall I go to Linda? Well, go for it, Linda. Linda?
I, um, you know, a lot of words are said and very few actions are done is what I'm hearing. And we've had more special meetings than ever. And I'm, I'm a little disturbed that when other people's wanted special meetings, they couldn't have. But you know, when this came up, there's so many and so much, so time consuming. I really thought this was going to be this weekend. So people have really time to engage and, and talk about this because I feel it looks like a lot of the members are off. A lot of the board members are off for whatever reason. I mean, things come up. But I thought we were going to do this this weekend and there's really, really was no dialogue input from the board of directors in this conversation package. And there's really no breakdown of that conversation packet of that agreement. We used to have the executive board, the executive directors agreement contract right in front of us, talking about it, discussing it. By all the benefits that are coming with this package, it's not broken down, especially the insurance. So that's a lot of, I don't know if what conspiracy is going on or who's going to get hired next as the deputy director? But I really do.
No, Mr. President.
Point of order, please.
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
Uh, I, I believe we're steering off from the direct.
You believe, don't say what you believe, say what you know.
Uh, Linda, Linda, we will.
Say what you know, don't say what you believe.
Okay, Linda.
Fair process, fair process.
Linda, we heard you. What's the point of order?
Point of order, Sonia, you out of control too. You, you're working agreement.
Linda, you are, you are out of order for interrupting.
Let me finish getting it. Quit saying Sonia, you don't have to.
Please mute Linda. Please mute Linda until I make a statement. I will make a statement right now.
Sonia, you're no longer here. You appear.
Linda, 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 you're out of order. Staff will mute Linda. You're out of order.
What's the out of order? What's the out of order?
You are out of order, you've been muted, Sonia, what's the point of order?
Point of order is that we need to stick to the question and the topic at hand, and the response was not addressing the comment directly.
Thank you. Members will not speak disrespectfully to other members and will not disqualify their presence and their ability to participate. Members will review our working agreements. That's institutes that we need to review how we progressed until today. I want to really thank everybody who have participated today. You're putting really valuable time into this meeting, and this is a step out of many steps. And I'm disturbed by the comments that Director Hamilton have made that are factually incorrect. You have the facts in front of you, a contract in front of you, a breakdown in front of you, and more transparency than ever. So I want to make that very known for the community and for our members and for the board members. And thank you for being involved in the most transparent process I ever imagined that we could have. And thank you for your participation in shaping this working agreement. With that, I will recognize Christie Cottick.
Thank you, Mr. President, I did wanna offer just a different perspective, I, as I'm waiting for my son to get off the bus. I feel like we, we are given the, the meeting comes out with a calendar invite. We are giving opportunity, I know for myself, I look at my calendar when that comes out, I make a decision on what I need to do to be here for the meeting. And if I can't, I feel like I have multiple options where I can share my, I can reach out to other directors. So I, for me, that's just a perspective of me feeling appreciative of the fact that we're, those of us that are here today are here, and I feel like there's avenues for directors who can't be to share accordingly. That being said, I would like to call the question, and I am in favor of moving this contract forward for a vote. And I don't know if emotion is appropriate now, in case I, in case I shoot out the door and back, it'll be with my special needs son. But I do wanna be here for that vote, and I think we, those of us, I mean, that are here and have taken the time, we deserve to have a chance to have that today, which is the agenda item.
All right, all those in favor for calling this to question, so just to make sure what I'm asking for right now, we require two-thirds approval, and I'll go for an audio vote. If it has appeared to me that people are ready to move on to the question, then we will go to a vote. So right now, I'm asking you, would you like us to move forward for a vote? Are you okay with that we suspend discussion and move to the vote, so we entertain the time? All those in favor of suspending discussion and moving to a vote, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against that we move into our votes, please say nay.
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 Or?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that that each board member had the ability to vote there, and if anybody is being muted, that should be removed, so each member was allowed to vote.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anybody who, I can, I can see it's really important since for that reason, I will ask Linda Hamilton to unmute, is there, everybody should be able to come off mute? We will do the votes one more time, is there any, if you are in favor of moving on from the discussion to the votes? So we are called to question, please say aye.
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 Those who are in favor that we continue discussion, say nay.
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 So help me out, Lenell, what's the total attendance of our voting board members? Because I counted five, if five is more than a third, then the motion failed, and we need to continue discussion.
There are fifteen in the room.
Fifteen, ten to five. It is the determination of the chair, if there's no objection, please feel free to object if you really think we should not go for a vote right now. It is the determination of the chair that two-thirds of the board have prevailed with suspending discussion and calling to a question, which means no further question, discussion is entertained. Is there any objection to this determination?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Director Greg Kins. I'm concerned that we were discussing the parameters for this. We were discussing the parameters on the first document, we have not gotten to the second document and have not taken any questions directly related to the contract. And my concern is that we're gonna be going to take a vote, and we haven't had even any discussion about the specific elements of the, of the contract itself. Do we have an opportunity to do that before we vote on the contract itself?
If you object, I'm gonna fail the motion, and yes, we'll continue discussion and questions if the board members are okay with us extending the time of the meeting, because now we're running more than the thirty minutes we allowed. So Greg, I hear you object to the determination, is that okay?
Yes, I would like to have some more questions about the contract itself.
Right, so the call for a question, and I apologize, Christie, but the call question have failed, but you will continue discussion. And I really want us to entertain questions to this, if there's no objection, we will extend the meeting until the end of the hour. But if we lose quorum, then we can't really make any decisions. We will extend until the end of the hour, let's plan at least to have five minutes for the vote. Now we will move forward for any questions you have on the parameters, on the contract, or around the process. Please feel free to share your questions or comments. I see hands up, and in the order that I see them, I have Greg, Don, and Chris, and Director Hamilton, please feel free to ask questions or or provide comments as long as they are in order, and I see them returning here. Greg, what's your comments or question?
Well, I have two questions, I'm perplexed that we do not have the entire benefits package in front of us. We do not have any idea what the total compensation cost is for this contract. When we do our own, in our own home districts, the public knows exactly to the dollar how much all the benefits cost, how much all the salary is, it's all published. And it's all right out there at the moment the board makes the decision on it. And I'm concerned that we do not know what the insurance contribution is, we don't know what the total benefits package is. And by my addition here, the salary, the annuity, the retention, the benefits, that all equals around three hundred thousand dollars. And I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I am not in favor of that big of a package.
Thank you, Greg. Don, and then Chris.
Hi, thank you, I was just gonna ask a quick question. There was comment about not having the whole board, was there numbers for what is coming this weekend? Like, is there, is majority of the board, only a few people being gone, that was my question, sorry.
Thank you, and I just was informed that Director Hamilton returned and did not hear my guidance when I shared it. Director Hamilton, feel free to ask to be recognized if you have any questions or inputs as long as they are in, in order. So to your question, I need to, Don, I need to ask Emily and Lenell if they have any inputs around how many members we're anticipating. I know some people will not be able to attend the whole meeting. And I know that the purpose of this meeting today is the contract, we did ask people to, through doodle, to share their availability. And so I really wanna make it very clear, we're putting, we're spending this hour out of our time as a conclusion of a very thorough process. We could sacrifice the retreat elements to do this work. However, some members may not be there for multiple reasons, and we did not notice the retreat with this reason. So we'll have to really spend lots of staff time moving things around, and executive committee time to really triage between many priorities that we have, including three resolutions to the membership, strategic work that we need to do for the years to come. So I would really encourage us to make expedient decision. You have the best set of agreements I can provide you alongside with my, Chris Cronin, with the parameters and input that you have shared. If you feel it is fit, we need to move on, if you feel it's not, we need to have your decision, so we know what's further actions we need to do. And to the question that Greg have asked, thank you, Don, for the question, really important. And for the question Greg asked, we do have a calculator for financials, we can provide as much details as possible if those financials are needed. I have reviewed the packets, an agenda of previous contract negotiations and contract proposals. This is the most thorough and transparent contract that OSBA has been provided as far as I could see the record being available for us. With that, we'll go to Chris Howitt, Chris Cronin. And then I think Emily Nishik would like to be recognized, Chris Howitt?
Thank you, I appreciate the conversation that we've had, there's some good questions being asked. I still am concerned that we have we have a quorum, which is half, half plus one of our membership. And of that number are the people who are for and against. So we're not really having a representative of the representative amount of the full board. And the most important thing that the board has to do is hire an executive director. And without that conversation, without that awareness with the full board, it does make me uncomfortable. And I'm, I'm off the top of my head, I don't know what all components we have of the strategic planning this weekend. But I feel like moving forward, the best way to reestablish and reset the trust that we've been talking about for the last four months is having this in an area where it is involving, at least making the attempt to involve a greater number of the board members, there's a few that aren't here that I really would have liked to have heard from. And so that's, I'm just having a little bit of trouble with the urgency to do this today.
Thank you, Chris, Chris Cronin, and then Emily Nishik, Chris Cronin?
I appreciate the discussion, I will, I, my, my hand was raised because I wanted to point out and the members, our entire board was provided with the contract, they had the opportunity to look at it. The board set the parameters, we followed the parameters, there's nothing in the contract that is really unusual. I will point out, and this is getting into the weeds, that our executive director does not take healthcare benefits. And so that is a very, very significant piece that she is not accessing. And so the, the numbers that have been mentioned are really incorrect in that way, in that way, and there are some other discussions. But the other thing I would just say is, you know, I, I understand that people want to have, I, I'm maybe more board members have the ability to have this discussion. I, I guess I would just say that the notice went out, there was a doodle poll, and there's a quorum, and that is how we do business. I think that the board members who made time out of their day to show up to this meeting should be honored by their appearance here, everyone made a sacrifice to be here, including the staff. And there's a reason that we suggested, or that we decided to do this meeting now instead of taking retreat time because we have important work to do at our retreat that we won't be able to do if we take up time now. So I'm just, I'm just helping the board, I hope, to understand that we're really trying to do the right thing here and give the board the optimal opportunity to function as a board.
Emily?
Thank you, Mr. President, Chris, you covered most of my points, and I did just wanna point out that a lot of that language was from the former contract, so not, not changing. We did go in and add the clarification around a lot of things to make it more transparent. But a lot of that around the benefits was all, the benefits were exactly the same because I don't take the benefits. And I think that in terms of the meeting timing of this, when we had conversations around it, felt it was very important to me, as a leader who's going to be asked to lead this organization through a very challenging time, continue to lead through a very challenging time, a huge legislative session. And to be able to start, and it's, it's feedback that I've received from many board members, to be able to start the year in that planning phase of the treat from a, from a fresh spot where we can all come together and start focusing on the work at hand that needs to happen to be able to move the organization forward, to be in a better place, to lead as an education leader in this state. And an example for our students and all of the school board members across the state who look to us for how to govern and lead. And so it felt incredibly important both to me to go into that meeting, leading from a place of, of security, and that we are turning the page and looking at a new direction, goal setting, and how do we wanna operate, and who do we wanna be in the next year? And so I think that starting a retreat with a contract negotiation that is invariably challenging, I will definitely recognize that, and uncomfortable to, to start off a retreat that is supposed to be fresh, and what do we want for the future, and have that be the start of the meeting. I think is a really challenging place for all of us to be in, and so we were really trying to look at how do we take that time to look to the future, to clean, continue to clean up what we need to clean up? But also, how do we wanna operate, what are our goals? And you know, who do we wanna be as OSBA in this next, next year? And so that was part of, I think, the decision going into having this meeting, having it wrapped up, so that we can start fresh. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Emily, very well said, thank you. And I wanna just say one thing, and I'll recognize you, Linda. No matter what we do and how we do it, we gotta do it thoroughly, and we gotta be locked in arms supporting the decisions we make, so we can keep moving forward, and supporting our administrator when we hire them. And I really see the success not only of the retreat, but success of Emily and her team is exactly with that fresh start that we can do at the, at the retreat to doing the business. With that, there is any final questions or comments that will help you make your mind on a decision that we, I recommend we do today, please raise your hand. We have Linda and then Katrina, please limit the comments to one minute maximum, Linda?
Could you state for the record what was the point of order? When I was muted, I was understanding a board member speaking could not be muted. When white supremacist was used, I was told that person couldn't be muted. Why was I muted when it was my turn to talk? And let's talk about racial justice.
Director Hamilton, you were speaking over the president when he was recognizing a point of order, and he was not able to hear the points.
Of order.
You're interrupting me again, Director Hamilton.
What was the point of order, though?
You're interrupting me again. The point of order was made, and I needed to recognize the person who was making the point of order, and you interrupted that, that's by itself.
President, you're the one makes the point of order. What was, another person that's not the president, and you were the president, just tell me why I'm being racially discriminated when the white woman talked about white supremacists, she was not muted.
Director Hamilton, I believe now you are out of order by engaging in a discussion that is out of the context.
Oh, it's not out of order, I want to know, why was I muted?
And I, I will answer that if you allow me to answer without being interrupted.
On what you usually do, President, you're talking circles and you're not answering my question. I was told by OSBA leaders that a member could not be muted. Why was I muted?
Director Hamilton, the answer is clear, can I answer it without being interrupted? And if you interrupt me, you'll be muted again.
I wanted in writing why I was muted, I'm really, racial discrimination, and I don't use hate crime words, put it in writing to me why I was muted, you're the president, someone else yell, point of order.
Director Hamilton, this discussion is now violating our working agreement, I will communicate with you in writing and happy to. I will communicate with you in writing and happy to give you a call right after this.
Violation of working agreements is to be you, Sammy and Sonia McKenzie. If anybody should know about violating working agreements, you two should know that.
Director Hamilton, do you have anything to the content, to the substance of this meeting? Katrina, what's your comment?
Again, I just want to give gratitude for the really, really in-depth and I know labor intensive work that was done here. I know two of the things that were brought into discussion were specifically the amount of compensation and the retention. Just a view of our superintendent salary is both of these things are very, very in line with all of our component districts and member districts and especially those with high student, student and community impacts. And so I'm finding that this is really in line with also what was suggested for us with our superintendent. And I just want to give gratitude with the fact that the more we can align with our districts with both the superintendent's values and how they support our students, I think the stronger OSBA can be. So thank you for those two pieces.
Thank you, Katrina. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion. Is there a motion?
I motion.
Katrina? What's your motion?
Oh, sorry. A second. I, I saw someone else motion first.
No, I think, go ahead, Katrina. That's fine. I was just leaning in. Go ahead.
Christie, you're right. Go ahead, Katrina, go ahead.
And I am driving. I'm sorry, sorry. I'm doing the best of my ability while driving.
I'll, I'll recognize Christie. I'll, I'll recognize Christie so she can read the motion as recommended, if that's okay, Katrina.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm just, I was wondering if there was a motion and I could so move it, but I will move, uh, move the, if that needs to be really official, it sounds like we might need to have it be.
It is, yeah.
Would you be able to reframe that for me?
The, I want to be as impartial as possible and give the floor to anybody.
Okay, if there's, if there's another member that would be able to frame it a little bit better than I would, I would appreciate it.
And I'll copy it for the chat. Yes, done.
I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the executor, executive director's contract as presented and authorized by OSBA board president to execute the contract on behalf of the OSBA Board of Directors.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please raise your hand if you'd like to discuss the motion. See, there's no discussion. It's been moved to approve the executive director contract as presented and authorized OSBA president, or board president to execute the contract on behalf of the OSBA Board of Directors. Lenell, please take a roll call. If you are in favor, say aye. If you're against, say nay. Craig, are you, we're taking a vote. Is it a point of order or? Let's pause the votes and listen to Craig. If it is a point of order, I'll listen to you.
Uh, yeah, yes, Mr. President. I just noticed someone dropped off. I just want to make sure that we still have a quorum.
Absolutely. We still have a quorum. Thank you for highlighting. That's really important. Lenell, please take a vote and confirm to me if we still have a quorum by the end of the votes as well.
President Abadabra, Sammy, I just had one quick question, please. Sorry, I had to step away for a second. My store is still open.
If it is a question, unfortunately, the motion is an order.
It is about the contract that.
I, I completely understand, but I really got to make keep the.
Okay, okay, all right.
Uh, just to be fair with everybody else, however, you have my commitment. I'll stick around after this and we can answer. It's on the record. Since that's not going to be a business, but you got to make a decision one way or the other now.
Okay, thank you.
I really apologize. Um, we got to stick with the process. Lenell, please take a vote.
Craig Albright?
Yes.
Jeff Crapper? Chris Cronin?
Yes.
Jackie Crook? Lori Danzuka?
Yes.
Katrina Doughty?
Yes.
Neelam Gupta? Linda Hamilton? Chris Howitt?
No.
Tristan Urban? Greg Kins?
No.
Christie Cockey?
Yes.
Steve Lowell?
Yes.
Sonia McKenzie?
Yes.
Alonso Oliveras?
Yes.
Chrissy Wrights?
Yes.
Clyde Rude? Nicole Schott? Emily Smith?
Yes.
Nancy Thomas? Glenn Walker? Don Watson?
Yes.
There are eleven yeses and two nos.
That's my record too, since eleven yeses and two nos. Uh, the motion on the prevailing side, uh, pa, uh, the prevailing side of the motion is the yeas. So the motion passes. Emily, congratulations. I am really grateful for all of you for your attention, your work. Emily, I know your work is going to be really important, hard. And one thing I want to ask myself and my colleagues, let's lock in arms and support you. Be as successful as you can be because that's what we need for our members and for the children. Board members, thank you. This was very heated conversation and there is so many questions and contributions from each one of you that will make this organization better. And I want to thank you for doing it. I want to acknowledge we had a really difficult conversation and disruptive, uh, rhetoric that we need to have a conversation, how we can do better about it. I take this responsibility on myself that this environment will be a safe environment, productive environment, a good place to work, a good place to volunteer. And I really hope that I have your commitments and supports for us all to accomplish that. With that, Emily Nishik, thank you very much for all of your work that you have done over the last 10 months. Now you have a contract to do the work, but we have the responsibility to support you, to ask you the questions, to hold you accountable and to cheer on you. So we can both, uh, we all can do the work that our kids not only deserve, but they absolutely need. So thank you, everybody, for all of what you have done. With that, I want to acknowledge the importance of this retreat. I want to ask you all, and I'll share this in an email, come with an open hearts. Come with an open mind, read the packets and be ready to do the work because we have lots of work to be done. Now with that, I want to ask Bob Seringer a technical question. I know some of, some of our staff may need to leave. But I would like to keep either the meeting open for answering questions. Uh, and seeing there's no business in front of the board, if we may answer them, uh, even if we lack a quorum or if we should do that at a later date.
As long as you don't conduct business, you're able to keep the, the meeting open. So I guess that's going to be the question. Do you plan to conduct business?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any business planned and we do not plan to conduct business. But I want to make sure that we open the opportunity for Chris Howard's questions. And I believe maybe Craig did not feel all of his questions were answered. So I want to make sure that they're all answered as soon as possible. And if, yes.
The key is going to be, you should not adjourn them. So you can continue with the meeting. If you lose a quorum, you're able to, you're able to still have discussions. You just can't take action. And then, uh, once you adjourn, then you should stop talking about, uh, official business.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Really appreciate it. So if there is no objection, we will continue, uh, the meeting. There is no further business, so no business will be conducted any further. And I would like to ask, ask Chris if you want to state your question. Uh, and anybody else who had questions that they felt that we need to answer. Chris Howard? And I believe Craig and Greg as well had questions. Uh, Greg?
Yes, uh, in our conversations between you and I and in other email that I've sent to the organization, I've, I'm concerned about the, the viability of our organization. And we have been talking and talking and talking for the last year at least about how much our, uh, our money has gone down and how much we're going to have to do. And I'm really concerned that we're going to be coming up here with some resolutions to charge our membership a huge amount of jumps in the next couple of years. I mean, when I was looking at the 15% rise in, uh, in the membership dues and everything that were proposed. Uh, my, my district is going to have to pay through the nose compared to what they had before. And we just continue to pay out money. And we're not getting any money. And now we're going to take it off the backs of the members. Members didn't have anything to say about how much we were going to pay our director. That's up to us. And now we're paying this, what I consider to be exorbitant rate way, and you use the terms slightly above the mean or the median when it's, uh, $30,000 is not slight to me. And I am very perplexed as to the direction that this, this organization is going. And the amount of money that we're spending and the amount of money we're going to have to require from our members to pay for it.
Thank you, Greg. Really appreciate this comment. And at this time, it's really valuable because as we reach to the retreat, we need to make sure that we talk about this as, uh, as honest as possible. We're paying 1997 money for the services we're getting in 2024. Members are receiving quality services and they deserve that. And I appreciate your comments. However, I will be happy to share with you more details around the financials, the competition. Make sure that you feel comfortable about the decision of the board. But even more importantly, for us to engage in very important discussion around the membership dues and also compare it to the salary. Uh, the increases of the salary are not going to exceed 1%. They are equitable, uh, and, and multiple factors. And we'll be happy to share that with you, but really appreciate your feedback. I believe there are a couple of other folks who wanted to ask a question. Craig, I think you, he left us. Uh, he had something to say, probably. Is there anything, anyone else who had a question that they feel did not get answered or would like us to answer or work on answering between now and the retreats? Chris?
Um, so it was a question about the contract towards the end. A statement was made that there would be some savings because uh, the executive director would not be taking advantage of the insurance benefits. However, it does say in the contract that they will. So it's, it's in the contract that they can. And so for me, I like a contract that says what they can and cannot do. There was also mentioned, um, while, um, the person that now has been offered the contract has been doing the interim position. It's still not quite the same as being an experienced, um, executive director and who the second in command will be as well. I've been a little bit concerned about the minimal amount of advertising that we did for the position. I believe in a previous meeting, it said that we met the legal requirements of the advertising, which didn't feel very good to me. And none of this, let me be very, very, very clear. I will work with Emily. I will work with her as the executive director. I just want to be able to get these out and then be done with them. So I'm not saying that I will not work with her. I will not sabotage her. I will not prevent her from being the best executive director that OSBA will have. I just want to get the questions out now. And I, I appreciate the comment about having a work-life balance. However, I, I was a little bit surprised and there, there should be some other language about how we talk about that. Because as soon as it was said that we wanted to have a work-life balance, it immediately went to she has children that she needs to be able to go and do things with her kids. And that feels very, very, um, related to women. I don't think we would ever talk about that with a man. Having a work-life balance to be able to go do stuff with his kids. So let's talk about work-life balance and having time away from work. But not talk about it in terms of being able to do something with your kids unless we're going to talk about that with all employees. That, that was just a little bit not, didn't quite hit the mark for me. I understand the concept and I wrote it down because actually I'll probably use something like that, our superintendent contract about work-life balance. But I won't reference in a way that makes it seem like only a woman needs to have a work-life balance because that's how it came out, even if that's not how it was intended. Um, and I, again, final time, I really would have liked to have had this in person so that we could have the conversation in person. We have had a lot of Zoom meetings. It is harder to have a Zoom meeting. And I really would have liked to have been able to have this at the retreat as a conversation and be able to to engage in a different way. So with that, um, I do need to get back to work and I appreciate the extra time that you have given me. And I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I just want to make sure now that all the other board members who are not able to be on this call get the same consideration for understanding what happened and being able to ask their questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I think Chris Cronin would like to address points that might be related to your inputs. So I don't want to pressure you to stick around. We're going to have a recording. We'll share it. And also I'll put into the record a few points that you highlighted that I have heard from other board members. And I feel it's important to put into the record. So if you want to move on, that's okay. But I'll share them and you can, you can listen to them over the recording or you can, to, to hear them out. But Chris Cronin first.
Yeah, I, before you go, Chris, I really appreciate your comments and, and, um, those, that, that, that statement about, uh, having children came from me that never came from, uh, our director. Um, and I, I actually, uh, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm thinking of any parent, any parent of children. Um, if we're in the business of, uh, doing the best for students, then my philosophy, my personal philosophy is that we, we need to recognize that some of our employees are parents as well as employees and that they should be able to do some of the things that they need to do as parents. We're understanding that they're employees as well. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but, and, and that it was really in terms of making sure that all, all employees of OSBA are entitled to a certain level of vacation and, uh, benefits in that way and, and that we need to honor that. So thank you for your comment and I, uh, I appreciate your insight.
Thank you. I want to share a few points that were highlighted and, and really important to highlight, the health benefits. Number one, it is still in the contract as it has been for former executive directors as well. Uh, however, we, uh, Chris and I have learned and it was shared with us that, uh, the health benefits are not being utilized. We did not use that as an element of the negotiation. We did not push to take it away. Understanding that, uh, at any point of time, someone may want to have those health benefits, to utilize those health benefits. So, um, I want to be very careful. I'm not an HR person, uh, but I think I, I, I want to, I don't want to tread on that one, which is, are we going to take a health benefits offer or not based on whether a person is utilizing them at this time or not? Uh, but it is a point of information for us to know about one of the cost savings that are available in this contract by still there. that are available in this contract, but still there. I can tell you in the, throughout the negotiation process, Chris and I, on your behalf, have saved the organization in several other elements where you have this contract in a, in a way that we feel is very fair, balancing all different elements. And more importantly, I want to say Emily, in the months to come, and I believe weeks to come, will share with you her decisions. And we have been taking the front seats, learning about those decisions where she's making judicious decisions that saving that situation and how she's hiring, who she's hiring, how she's restructuring the organization. And to that point, in terms of the interim deputy director, I want to make it clear that at the time of hiring the interim act or the acting executive director Emily at the time, she promised to do one job, the executive director job. And her earlier job, the deputy position becomes vacant in an interim basis. And that's where Haley was hired as an acting deputy executive director. So she was doing one job as the executive director and Haley was doing the job of the deputy executive director. Now that this position is permanent, Emily will make the staffing decisions for the whole organizations as the superintendents do and CEOs do in the organizations. And she will keep us surprised around how those decisions are the best interest of the organization. We can ask questions about salary. We can ask questions about salary scale. We can ask questions about scope and job descriptions. By the very end, the hiring decisions and structuring decisions are executive decisions for the administrator. In terms of experience, I really want to thank you all for asking questions about Emily's experience. Emily is very humble. She doesn't brag as much as I would like her to brag about her experience. She led an organization of comparable size of staffing, comparable scope. And definitely we will want to make sure our members know about her experience. In terms of the advertising of the position, here's a very important question that Chris have brought up. Before advertising to this position, we had two pathways. Are we accepting applications or are we not accepting applications? And if we are not accepting applications, I'm only considering to hire the interim executive director as executive director, that path requires advertisements. But even with advertisements, we would not be accepting applications. We have one person that we were considering. And that's the path we took. That board have decided to consider direct hiring. And in order for us to meet an executive session and do the due diligence process that we have opted to do, we needed to advertise that we're doing a hiring process. And Bob shared clearly with us, we may receive applications, but that does not imply that we're accepting them or we're not proactively encouraging people to apply and honestly give them a wrong message because we already have made a decision. We're conserving a direct hire. With that's all paused. I said so many things. Bob, am I accurate?
I, I would tweak it a little bit to, to be clear that what we were talking about was the predicate for having an executive session. And in order to have the executive session, it was necessary to announce the vacancy, which is simply to state that the position is open. There wasn't an affirmative, an affirmative requirement on the part of the OSBA to go out and seek applicants. And exactly for the reasons that you stated, because of the decision of the board early on to first consider whether it would consider the interim executive director for the position. I think it was a wise decision not to seek applications at that time and attract applications from people who would believe that they would be considered for that position when the board really wasn't going to go in that direction.
Thank you, Bob. Really appreciate it. Sonia?
Yeah, I didn't get an opportunity to, to share my appreciation for, for Emily and her experience. But I wanted just, since we have this time, if I can just, a few minutes of time just to share my appreciation. I had the pleasure when I was president of meeting Emily last year when she started. And I did some research on her. She was a director of an incredible organization in college, Possible. And they do amazing work. She's been in the nonprofit field for, gosh, 13 years, leading organizations of comparable size, just amazing experience. And I just, I, I wish that more folks would research and look at the breadth of her work. Her credentials speak for themselves. She's been recognized by lots of organizations for her amazing work. And I'm just, I'm really honored that she's here with us and leading the work that we're doing. And she brings, she brings a great deal of knowledge. She is very humble about that. But she has, she has the skills and this is not, she's not an entry level nonprofit leader by any means. It's an insult to the, to the breadth of work she's done and the organization she's impacted. So I'm really grateful that she's here and glad we were able to move this forward. So.
Thanks, team. So with that, I believe, is there any more questions or anything that you would like to share? I really want to hold the space for everybody to share. Folks, I want to put some on the record. I'm really disturbed by the interruption and, and the language that was shared at a certain point of this meeting. I don't want it to overshadow this important milestone. But you have my commitment to do, to continue to do as best as we can to build those bridges. And if there is anything I can do better, so we can build those bridges and make sure this is a better place for us to have situational awareness of what's going on, be able to know where we are, where we're moving forward and how we can move forward and have everybody have equal opportunity to produce input. Please let me know how we can do that. Let Chris and the leadership know how we can do that. So we are at your service and staff is helping us as best as they can. And I want to make a message to the staff. Really appreciate you being here and, and we got your back. We're, we're here to support you. We're here to make sure you're successful. And the most important thing I want to say about this meeting, we made the decision to hire an executive director who will support you, be successful in the organization. So you can reach out to every member in our membership and give them the services that they deserve. So with that, and we have seen there's no further business or discussion in front of the board. Thank you all for sticking around. Have a wonderful rest of your afternoon and I'll see you on Friday. With that, we are adjourned.